Good morning and welcome to the regular meeting of City Council for Tuesday, December 14th, 2021. Council will be meeting in a hybrid format until further notice. We encourage speakers to continue joining us virtually or as in chambers. However, there is a limited number of seats available in chambers. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Reverend Burgess, Mr. Coghill, Ms. Gross.
Here.
Mr. Kraus.
Here.
Mr. Lavelle.
Here.
Throw corner.
Here.
Ms. Strasburger.
Here.
Mr. Wilson.
Here.
Mrs. Kelsmith, President.
Here.
Seven members present.
Okay, I'll tell you about that. Thank you, Madam Clerk. As we join from our remote locations, please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance and remain standing for a moment of silence. And in the moment of silence, please keep James Mullen, the husband of Carmella Mullen, who was also very active in our, we've got the same shirt on, in our veterans. In our veterans. I apologize, just noticed we have the same shirt on. I'm gonna go home and change. Carmella Mullen's husband, James Mullen, who was very active in our Vietnam veterans and did a lot for the veterans organizations across the city, passed away this past week. So our condolences to Carmella and her family and to the veterans who mourn him, but also please keep him in your moment of silence.
The Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, thank you. And our next order of business is proclamations, and we have one to be read into the record by Councilman Kraus, and then we have one to be presented, right? So do you want to read the one into the record first? Mary?
Okay.
Okay.
Madam President.
Yes.
May I have a motion to amend today's agenda to introduce new papers according to our new system?
Okay, we have a motion to amend, and we have a second. Any discussion? Owen, Owen, favor?
Aye.
And just so you know, we have new rules of council under the Sunshine laws, and so this is the new format.
You'll have to hand them to the clerk, I believe?
Yes, please.
Madam President.
Thank you. Yes.
Thank you. Will we be publishing our, these new rules somewhere on the City Clerk's or City Council's website?
Yes, yes.
Thank you.
Clerk's office is working on that. These are the ones from the Sunshine, we have to talk about the task force, but let's just do this first, then we're gonna get to Councilman Kraus and his proclamations. I apologize, Councilman.
Oh, you're fine. Thank you, Madam President. What am I doing, staying here?
We're waiting until Madam Clerk comes back.
Okay.
I don't know. Yeah, did you do everything with Councilman Gross? Is that done? Okay. And then now, Councilman Kraus, I apologize. We have one to be presented and one to be read into the record.
Oh, come on. So, come on, please. So has there ever been quite the uniqueness of an employee here in the city of Pittsburgh is James Hill? And long after the Paduto administration resolves, the footprint and the fingerprints of James Hill is gonna be all over the city. So much of what we see that sort of goes unspoken, but you know there's a, there's a touch of genuine love and, and, and genuine love for the city and the history of the city. And it's, it's always, when we peel back the layers, it's always, it always leads back to James, that some way, somehow, James was involved in, in doing it. So we, we believe it was only appropriate to recognize, at least in my mind, one of the most unique individuals that has ever graced the, this city with their employment. So with that, we're here to embarrass you and, and to show you how much we care and respect you, James. So with that, whereas James Austin Hill, Executive Assistant to Mayor Paduto, started his service to the residents of the city of Pittsburgh on November 2nd, 2015. And whereas a proud Shenley Spartan, James possesses a rich and unique understanding of both the history and the culture of the city of Pittsburgh, as well as an ingrained imagination for the composition and form his city will take for decades to come. And whereas James has graced the city with not only his soterical acumen, what is this? Okay? But has in traceable upbeat hospitality that many city employees have come to appreciate while walking through the doors of the city county building and many leaders have come to expect when meeting with the mayor. And whereas never one for idle hands, except for council chambers, Mr. Hill has served the city of Pittsburgh faithfully and dutifully, from expanding the light up night celebration, the ginger house competition, to the continual sprucing up of the city council chambers, except now, and to coordinating the result of the city's Fourth of July celebration and doing it all with tastefully ironed flags and bunting. So I understand it was incredibly important that we include the word bunting in the, in the product. And whereas James Hill will be dolefully missed by both his colleagues, but his fingerprints will be found for years to come, sometimes in places where only he knew the importance of his touch. And whereas James colleagues from council will miss his penchant for leading tours of the building, it's okay, especially when an unexpected field trip from a Pittsburgh school stops by. And whereas James has expanded the role of special assistant to not just make sure that the mayor looks professional, but also that the city of Pittsburgh, as an institution, presents itself as polished, professional, and stately. So now therefore be it resolved that the council of the city of Pittsburgh does recognize, celebrate, and thank James Hill for his commitment to the city of Pittsburgh, and be it further resolved that this council of the city of Pittsburgh does hereby declare today, Tuesday, December, last Tuesday, you weren't here, last Tuesday, December the 7th, 2021, to be James Austin Hill Day here in the city of Pittsburgh.
Can I have a motion in a second?
Move.
Second.
Owen, favor?
Aye.
Proclamation, please.
Congratulations, James.
Well, I've been telling myself I wasn't gonna cry until at least the Christmas party. But I really, I've just loved my job. I really have. You know, ever since back at Shenley, when they first started closing that and I first got my taste of what government was with the school board and realized it was somewhere I wanted to be and help.
You've gotta be kidding me.
And I've been so honored and lucky to, to, to serve the mayor all these years and to have a mayor who kind of everything, Councilman Kraus said, doesn't just let you do your job, he lets you do what you just enjoy doing. And you know, it's not just been the deeds and the contracts and all the, the keeping him never on time to anything, as you all know, so that part I failed that epically over the years. He, he has always allowed us to just do what we love. And I've loved this city so dearly, and I still do, and I still will forever. I have loved the idea of government and pride that we should have, not only in this, you know, in this beautiful building, but in everything the city does. It's truly been an honor and a pleasure, and I've gotten to love talking and working with all you and each of your districts to do things here and there. And I'm gonna miss this job very much, I'm gonna miss all of you very much, I'm gonna miss the mayor very much, but you know, I've been joking, I'm gonna be the number one 311 complainer in all of 2022. I'm never gonna be too, too far around, but it's really been an honor and a pleasure. And Bruce, I appreciate this so very much, and you know, it's, it's been a wild ride. I've been one, one lucky young man. You know, I think of things, thank you. To get just a little bit more sentimental for a second, when I think of things I would have loved to tell my late mother about, all these wonderful adventures and times I've had with all of you, it's, it's really meant a lot. And I just wanna say thank you all, and I'll never be too, too far away in the future. So, Councilman, Council, thank you all for this lovely, lovely gift.
Councilman and City Council, thank you for, for recognizes. James, great work. I'll start on the humor side and then get serious. You know, we're not exactly in the strongest financial position always in this city, and James always has very grand ideas of beauty, and I always tell him we have no money. And somehow, it always ends up happening, and then I get mad at him and tell him we had no money, and somehow he pulled it off without spending any money. He can convince anyone to sponsor a beauty event. I don't know if you guys know this, but we acquired the VA site, of course, for a dollar, as you well know with Count Sport, and somehow James found an entire store room of Christmas decorations that the VA had left behind. So again, Essers Plaza on the south side and a number of other locations got new Christmas trees because James found the way without spending a dollar. So he's loved every minute of it, and I will say, you know, this is a surprise to all of us, that I'm sure the mayor would have been here had he known. But I will say, first, from my perspective, there are many great things, you know, of course, that we believe that the mayor did for the city, but I think more than anything was an eye for talent in finding people like James and Lindsay and Majestic and Kinsey and so many others, not to leave anybody out. And he first got to know James when James was in high school, and he was fighting to save Shenley and part of the, what is it, the, I don't know if it was the Centennial Committee or the right name, but the Shenley Historical, and he stood out as an 18-year-old. You knew that this young man was gonna be something special, and then he was working for Councilman Lavelle. When I was a councilman and Mayor Paduto, it was his first term, and I can remember, Mayor grabbed me and, you know, said, can you, can you talk to that James guy from Shenley and see if he'd leave Lavelle to come over? And we got coffee over at Starbucks and sat outside Oxford Center, sorry, and convinced him that, to leave the councilman's office and that this would provide him such a unique opportunity, and he's taken advantage of every minute of it. And the people will miss you, we will all miss you, James. I think for all of us, the most emotional and hardest part is this team breaking up, as much as we love our jobs and love the city, it's that we love each other, and you have been such an integral part of that, and I think the councilman nailed it. It's many of the things that nobody sees or, or knows, even that the city has done. But you are right, every piece of flag and bunting has been carefully ironed, measured. You know, he cleans my drapes when I don't need them to be cleaned, it doesn't matter. He, he is on it, and he makes this, this city sparkle, he makes this building beautiful, and he puts on that touch that makes events special. All of the press conferences he does with special events and Christmas and everything has that, that James Hill touch that no one can match. And we tease you sometimes in the office, but we do it with pure love and appreciation that you make the city what it is, James. So, Council, thank you for recognizing his great work.
I don't really have much to add. James, as everyone has said, is such a special individual, and someone who, when I first came to this role, took me very quickly under, you know, his thing, which didn't understand what that was or what it, knew what it was before I started, and, and really made me appreciate how to ensure that everything had that special, beautiful James Hill flair. We, as others have said, gone back and forth on, on, you know, our priorities sometimes, but he's absolutely like a little brother to me, and the city is so much more wonderful, more beautiful, and more special because of all the work. Thank you, Council, for this acknowledgement.
The members.
If they'd like, oh, absolutely.
Do the members want to say anything? That's been called.
Yeah, I'll take a minute. So, James, I just wanna tell you, you know, we've talked in the lobby many a times, but I just wanna share a quick little story. I came in the lobby, a friend of mine who works in the controller's office, James was sweeping, you know, the lobby for us, you know, diligently, by the way, which he has, almost every morning I come in, and my friend grabbed me, he said, he said, I love how you talk to the, you know, the people who sweep the floors and everything. And I said, yeah, yeah, I said, oh, yeah, James. And he said, oh, yeah, James. And I said, I said, well, he's not, doesn't just sweep the floors, he'll be at the mayor's office in about five minutes. I said, he's the mayor's right-hand man. So they're, they just kinda got a chuckle over that, and I really appreciate that, James. I love seeing you do that. You're a young guy, you've got the world in front of you, you're gonna do great things, whether it's continues with the city or whatever, whatever your next chapter in life is. And I will tell you, I still, I don't know what bunting is, but I will tell you, you know, you win my prize for best Christmas tree decoration, right? So, good work, James. I just wanted to acknowledge the things you do. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman. Councilwoman Gross.
James, I want to also thank you for your service and for your sartorial acumen, as we said in the proclamation. And obviously your acumen with all of the things that were mentioned in, in helping to, you know, help us understand our city and respect it, especially, I, I want to acknowledge that I was concerned about your appointment to the Historic Review Commission, but that I, I'm so deeply appreciative of your passion for Pittsburgh history. And I'm recalling a moment on the sidewalk when you came out of a car with just piles of books of, that were part of what we were finding in our archives and working with our archivist at City Council. That's real work that is shameful that we hadn't already done, and I really want to acknowledge and thank you for that work in knowing, having our history and having it available to the public and to ourselves. It's been really, really important work that will carry on for decades and be a permanent part of our city record, and I, it's really important work, and thank you for helping us to respect our places and our history and our story. Thank you, James.
Thank you, Councilman Lavelle.
Thanks, James. It's truly been a pleasure to see you grow. When you left my office for the mayors, I was actually very happy, because I knew you couldn't, no, 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 not in a bad way. I, I knew he couldn't grow into what he really needed to grow into, and my office couldn't provide, afford you the opportunities to become the man you are today. So I was happy to see you have such a wonderful opportunity, and I've said it privately and I'll say it publicly, I believe I can speak for most on council, to the extent that we can help you and work with you moving forward, please let us know how.
Councilman, then we'll just go down the line, and then.
It's on or not? Oh, okay. No, I, I think probably my best memory is when the kids come in and I have them yell and scream in this room, and you're there with me, or you come out and you surprise everybody from the mayor's trap door back there. So I think for taking people around this room, it's really important what you have done to teach a lot of people the history of this city. And you're right, everybody here brings a guest up, and you're always the first one that's willing to walk them into every room and explain it to them. And I think something like that goes a long way, especially when you're talking to kids and what you've done for their future. I think that's something that we cannot comprehend the impact that you have had on just them alone. And I think seeing you at a lot of events, it's always great because then, you know, you know, as you're at the podium talking and I see you appear, I know I have to introduce about 20 more people until the mayor's there. So you were always that lead to how much ti, how much Paduto time we all had in order to get him there on time. But it, it's also a credit to you for going to each and every event, and I think you took a lot of pride in that, and that's a very difficult job to be everywhere. And, and I think you've done an excellent job, and we are definitely going to miss you here, and there is rumor that Thursday you have to wear a tuxedo to the party, so I will, everybody will be interested in seeing that. But again, thank you for all of your years of service. You did this city proud, so thank you.
Thank you, Councilman. Councilwoman Strasburger?
Thank you, James. I met you when you were in Councilman Lavelle's office, and I'm so glad that the casting directors of Me and Earl and the Dying Girl cast you as an extra, featured extra, appearing in Shenley, so that moment of your first political experience can be memorialized on film forever. You have done everything that everyone said, you're just so multi-talented that you've done everything. A lot of people will call the invisible work that you do emotional labor, but for you, I don't think it's work, it's, you seem to enjoy it, and you have, you do it with a smile on your face and with a sense of humor. You give tours, you beautify our city. I think there was one day when I was Chief of Staff to then Councilman Gilman, and you were in your current position, and you were really tired, and I said, why are you so tired? You said, well, I stayed up all night decorating the window displays at the old Kaufman's Building. I mean, it's not just the city county building, it is the city, truly, that you've made more beautiful. And, you know, numerous contracts, constituent requests, and now you're the Press Secretary for the city. I mean, you are so multi-talented, you've left an indelible mark that will last for decades to come, if not, if not centuries to come. And I just want to say, I'm so glad I've gotten to work alongside of you for so many years, and I cannot wait to see what you do next. Thank you. Oh, one last thing, I took my friends, I took some friends around to see all the Christmas trees around the downtown part of the city this weekend, and they said, oh, this one is by far the best, and the front, the front set of displays with a Christmas tree and the gingerbread houses. And I said out loud, what are we gonna do without James Hill in future years? So they all know your name now, too.
Thank you, Councilman. Councilwoman.
All right, James, well, I can't, I don't wanna repeat everything, everything's so great, what everyone said. I think a good moment for me was whenever I realized that you were Coach Luke's nephew. And for people that don't know, it was the Shenley basketball, he was gym, gym teacher, phys ed teacher, and anyway, I had him. And I don't know, just really placed you like in the city of Pittsburgh for me, because I was like, wow, I was like, what a, what a guy. And then, you know, you're just so phenomenal, and I see everything you do, and you're amazing as well. So, you know, I just kept thinking about him saying zero whenever I realized that. You'll get that. But, you know, one thing that I ended here is like, just how much you've really improved the whole social media part of the city. Like, I don't think people know this, but like, I mean, you literally in the time of like, when social media is, you know, the thing where everyone goes to to find information, like, you're, you're it, like, you're, you know, you're behind a lot of those handles and posts that are being made and really, you know, giving the public access to what the city is doing and what they're achieving. So thank you for all of that, and I wish you all the best.
Thank you.
James, so you are, you know, my children's age, so I hope you don't mind me, I reminded of something that happens with my children, and I hope you don't mind me sharing, because this reminds me of that. One of the moments that are x to my stone about my children is graduation. When they graduate, we have this celebration of what they've done and their accomplishments. This reminds me very much of this, right? We, we, you are, you are not ending, really, you are graduating to a greater service, I think. Now, now, yeah. And so that's first of all, I want to, I want to thank you for your sacrifice, for your commitment, and I'm celebrating your graduation, right? Right, right? I will, one of my sons, one of my sons, not all of them, right? They all went different places, you know? But one, one son, when he graduated, he came to be my assistant at the church, and he stayed in Pittsburgh and with the seminary, and so we, one of my sons, they all, didn't all stay with me, but one graduated and stayed. And so we, you are graduating, but who knows, maybe you'll be like one of my sons, and maybe you won't quite go too far from us. So we love you, we are praying for you, and we're here to assist you and pour into you for the rest of your life. God bless you, son.
Thank you. And then I'm just gonna say, James, first of all, tell them where you went to school, middle school, middle school.
Oh, PCA.
District two. But I just wanna say, I didn't realize you worked in Councilman Lavelle's office, but when I met you and saw some of the things you were working on, and people would ask me, who did that bunting, the flag bunting at the Overlook in Elliott? Who did it up in Mount Washington? Who, who did some of the ornaments with all the different neighborhoods? So all these different things I would hear, and the lighting on the Chris, on the building outside, and everything would always come back to, it was James, it was James, it was James. And so, James, I think, this is, to me, this is not goodbye, we're begging James to stay with the city of Pittsburgh, and not because James needs us, but because we need you. We really need you to do some of the things that you've done. I've never seen a young person embrace history the way you have, and you actually make a lot of people have a fondness for it and understand it and appreciate it in ways that maybe some of us have gotten a little bit disenchanted with some of our history. I think that you've done an amazing job in making sure that we remember to embrace it and to understand it a little bit better. So, thank you, and I also want to thank Assistant Director Powell and Chief of Staff Dan Gilman for allowing you the opportunity, and Mayor Paduto for hiring you, to allow you the opportunity to do all the amazing things that you do for the city with such love and such passion. So with that said, thank you, Councilman, also for honoring him. Thank you for him.
Maybe we have all members, please, if we have the first staff and Sergeant Armstrong to.
Come on, Bob. Bob Charlin in Councilman Kraus's office, come on up. You know Bob Charlin's dad and my husband worked there.
Yeah, I know.
Kim, go on the other side, we match our shirts. I said I was never gonna do the shirt, but you have. Thank you, thank you, James. We have one proclam to be read into the record, Madam Clerk, from Councilman Kraus as well.
Councilman Kraus presents Bill Number 2347. Be it further resolved that the council of the city of Pittsburgh hereby declares Monday, December 13th, to be Mary Frances Cooper Day in the city of Pittsburgh.
We have a motion, is there a motion to approve in a second?
Yeah, a motion to approve, very brief discussion, please.
Second.
Owen, favor?
Aye.
Oh, proclamation, I'm sorry.
Yeah, you know, I just wanna take a moment to recognize the service of Mary Frances Cooper to the Carnegie Library of Pittsburgh. You know, we were at a board meeting last night saying goodbye, and, and I was thinking of a time in 2008, 2009, when the library had hit a wall, and were, we were seriously financially distressed and wondering whether or not we were gonna be able to keep all branches open. There were six branches, West End being one of them, that was on the chopping block that could have closed. It was, it was a dire time, but it really was the, the leadership of Mary Frances Cooper, it was the board, it was, thank God, the electorate who saw the importance of the library system to the residents of the city of Pittsburgh, that we were able to pass the library referendum, the libraries are whole and healthy again, hours restored, staff restored, and the focus is, is really on literacy and learning in, and our connection to community. And that all happened under the leadership of Mary Frances Cooper and over the last 10 years, and she will be greatly missed. And I just think it's very important that we recognize that, the, the service that she brought to the Carnegie library system.
that she brought to the Carnegie Library System.
Thank you, Councilman. Any other members? That's it? The proclamation's approved, we already voted. Thank you, Councilman.
Thank you.
And our next order of business is public comment. I want to thank the public for their patience as we go through the order of business this morning. I would like to remind everyone that the rules of council state that comments are limited to matters of concern, official action, or deliberation, which are or may be before City Council. Profanity and threats will not be permitted. May we have the first speaker, please? And I have the first speaker registered as Naomi Mullen. Naomi Mullen?
Good morning.
Morning, Naomi. Please continue.
Hi, thanks. Shady trees, not shady deals in Bon Air. The Pennsylvania Constitution states that political powers, all political power is inherent in the people, and all free people are founded, all free government is founded in the people, and all free governments are founded for their authority and instituted for their peace, safety, and happiness. Where did public servants think that they should be lording over us? The PPS Board and Administration created a controversy against us. After repeated speeches to the Board and City Council, they have not dropped the sale of Bon Air School. It is a crime to use the falsehood for voting, creating a resolution, signing a sales agreement, transferring property, or creating a legal contract under misrepresentation. Officials have a duty to investigate and act against crime when notified. There have now been three community meetings with Gregory Coyle. It is eight months of no community support from Bon Air. He even gave, we even gave him a petition with 250 signatures on it. We want the building torn down and the green space to take its place. Gregory is operating in bad faith, and the school district officials are harming we, the people of Bon Air. The oath of office holds all public servants accountable should they ever violate, infringe, or deprive us of one of our God-given, constitutionally protected, and guaranteed rights. We, the people of Bon Air, have, have significant investments into our properties. We stand to lose significant value financially and quality of life reduction. We, the people of Bon Air, express significant concern about potential development of the school. Our peace, safety, and happiness are being threatened. The Pittsburgh Public School Board, Administration, and Gregory Coyle are causing negligent infliction of emotional distress and blockbusting by their opposition to our community. These are real damages that we, the people of Bon Air, demand remedy for. Negligent infliction of emotional distress is a personal injury that arises when a defendant acts so carelessly that he or she must compensate the injured person. Has City Council taken any steps toward a resolution to protect the Bon Air property owners from enemies that continue to harm us? My sincere, consistent request is that City Council create a resolution to block zoning change and support a green space to replace Bon Air School Building. Do your part for the environment. Reduce urban heat, reduce watershed to Route 51, increase green space to benefit all ages and stages, protect the children at the playground across the street. Let's make it wheelchair accessible to allow those who have difficult access to nature the ability to enjoy it. Tear down detrimental problem buildings, not safe, stable neighborhoods. You want to reduce watershed?
Thank you. And our next speaker is, registered speaker is Dr. Ronald Lynn Miller. Dr. Miller?
Dr. Ronald Lynn Miller, Bels Hoover, and Atlanta, Georgia. All council episodes are publicly documented. Global Intelligence Society, U.S. National Candidate, 2024. GlobalIntelligenceSociety.org. In the early 2000s, I became a member of the American Psychological Association and the Association for Psychological Science. Kamalod, dhanom. Where is that? A concern of council is with the law, Lex, and the legitimacy of its own existence. Was the law of council set in stone a distant moon ago here? Oh, yes, 1789 U.S. Constitution. The governing legislatures are to be legitimated via citizen vote. The vote to November 2021 for councilors and mayor is not legitimate because no voter can verify his or her vote. There's a vote voter receipt vacuum. No vote totals reported by the clerk three January 2022 at the swearing in will be certified by the people, the body of individual Pittsburgh voters. Pittsburgh Council and Mayor 2021 and 2022 are illegitimate, unlawful. Anti-Lex Pittsburgh will make for Pox or Bellum Pittsburgh. Bellum, no love here. Council history shows a pattern of lawlessness and rulelessness and incivility. A few examples. One, Kail Smith and Darlene Harris consulting while a public commenter is telling her rape story. It's lawless and cruel. Two, Kail Smith and Coghill consulting while citizen RLM does his PC. Unlawful. Three, Kraus interrupting and expelling citizens Yampolo for using the word rape. Law unabiding. Four, Kraus expelling citizen Yvonne Brown, helping with another citizen's PC. Uncivil. Five, Kraus permitting RLM defamation by citizen, storming Mira Montez in her public comment. Lawless, vulgar, and profanity was permitted. Six, Burgess permitting councillor Gross interference with RLM PC. Uncivil, lawless, ruleless. These are the legal laws ignored by you councillors. These episodes show a pattern of violation of civil rights, Lex and Vox populis, psychopathological, and require PA, state, and U.S. federal legal intervention. Pittsburgh Council and Mayor 2021 and 22 are not legitimate. We need a roundtable government, not a hierarchical government. The swearing in will be opposed. Inclusion of vote voter unverified election numbers is delusionary, pathological pseudo-legitimation. Insinuation of so help me God into the oath of office is not in Article 7, Section 709 of the Home Rule Charter.
Next speaker, registered speaker is Millie Sasse.
Millie?
Hi, there I am.
Good morning.
I'm Millie.
I think I have my three minutes down. My name's Millie Sasse. I'm an Oakland resident for more than 40 years, and I have a landlord. I'm a landlord there. I own a few little houses there. Thank you for the opportunity to speak. I had sent all of you a letter a couple days ago highlighting my continuing exasperation about Bill Ordinance, the Amendment to Ordinance 1867. I thought about it a lot again last night after I wrote that letter and had met also with Dan Wood of Councilman Lavelle's office and Councilman Kraus. But what I'm thinking now is, why not? For areas like Oak Cliff, we don't have alleys, we don't have driveways, we have very few garages. Why not allow us to opt out of the landlord-owner portion of the amendment? Because we have about 75, wait, and we could, if we could do that with 75, 70% of the certified resident signatures, that's what we did to get Area E 40 years ago. And I've been in the neighborhood for 40, I was one of those people to gather those signatures. And why can't we also opt out of short-term rental permits with 70, 70% of signatures of certified residents? We're not like Murdoch Farms that has driveways and garages. We're not like areas in Bloomfield that have driveways and garages. We're not there. We don't have alleys, we don't have back alleys. And with owners being able to get a valid permit means that they can, they can own a house in my neighborhood, park there legally, walk up and work at Pitt, work at the hospitals, work anywhere. They're not a resident, they do not deserve a permit. We, as you know, we're already oversubscribed. Enforcement has always been a problem, especially since our paper visitor passes and our stickers have gone away. But we could, we could bear that, but, but we cannot. On my neighborhood, this will kill my neighborhood, the, the landlord permits and the, and the short, the short-term permits for, for the, for Airbnbs. So I hope that you can reconsider this as you're looking at the amendment and voting on it today. And why must this be done right now? You're in the middle of the budget project. I'm in the middle of trying to help my granddaughter plan for Christmas. Why does it have to be done now? Director Dash told us that this was, we were going to have meetings way back in May and June, but we didn't get any meetings until October. And there were only two, there was not enough public input. The letters that I wrote are only the things that I, I sent. And you can see that I did highlight a number of problems with that legislation. And, you know, I, I'm an old lady, but I can read. And, and I, I think that, that it needed a reader, it needed somebody to give it a thorough look. And I think that it needs to be, yeah, well, anyway, I, I would like you to kill the bill, but I understand you can't do that. But if you could give us the opportunity in neighborhoods like mine to opt out of some of the--
Thank you. And our next speaker is Joan Dickerson. Joan Dickerson.
Hi, I'm Dr. Joan Dickerson. I'm a longtime resident of Oak Cliff, a lifelong resident of Pittsburgh, and a Henry Hill, Heron Hills, Shenley, and Pitt graduate. I want to address RPP Ordinance 1867. Apologize for interrupting your budget considerations for something that should have been a vote and go process, but we don't understand why such a complex bill was introduced at this time and in such a hurry. It was mentioned in Mayor June, but the first of only two meetings was not held until October. At the meetings, the crew described to us the intentions of each section of this legislation. However, in my opinion, the text of the legislation does not deliver on your intentions. Some of your intents, accommodating nursing care, home repairs, et cetera, could be managed via special exception and ad hoc permit arrangements, which methods are currently in use. Our analysis has been sent to you. There we only analyze some of the section. This bill will produce chaos. As an example, giving two visitor permits to an RB, RB and B unit where I can only get a single visitor permit. Allowing parking for 60 days, but tracking permit use for only 30 days, which means you'd never catch up with someone who parks 90 days. Allowing management companies to have multiple permits in addition to the permits allowed to the resident. You're giving a benefit to landlords who participate in the rental registration program, and this might encourage registration, but this, that shouldn't be necessary. Our Oak Cliff area is heavily overparked, has few accessible backyards, and only one alley for parking. I don't know how you can help us at this point, but please do something to help us. Thank you.
Thank you. Have a good day. And our next speaker is Ikahana Halmakena. Ikahana Halmakena. She on? Ikahana Halmakena, you're muted. Please unmute your mic. One more time, Ikahana Halmakena. We'll move on to our next speakers. Ikahana Halmakena. Our next speaker, is there anyone, that exhauster list of registered speakers, is there anyone in the audience wishing to address City Council? Good morning, Ms. Brown.
My name is Yvonne F. Brown. I live at 715 Mercer Street. That's Kaylee, we are Ervis Tires up in the hill, just on the top of the hill. I came today to speak because I heard on 90.5 about your hearing that you had with the Wilkinsburg CDC. I think it's, I'm not sure what the group is, but anyway, they want to be annexed. But I saw paper, and I couldn't find it, where they, they had wrote in the cornea that Wilkinsburg did not want to be annexed. I couldn't find the paper because I'd like to bring something so I can show you. But first, I want to say this. When Jordan Miles, they first had that hearing down at downtown, the very first hearing about Jordan Miles, I went to him per, on purpose. I said to him, listen, honey, you know what happened to you. I don't care what they say, you know it. And then I said to him, be thankful that you made it through because my son did not, and I must speak for him. So I'm not saying, I'm not speaking to you, council, because you just don't care. I'm saying to the Wilkinsburg people, I am a grieving mother. Even though it's been years, I still lost a son that five cops walked out on with him crying, saying he only had one lung. There's a lot of times that you had the men that they, the police have killed or let die, and they were saying, if I could only breathe. That's what my son was saying. What you need to understand is, when my son walked into that house, his girlfriend's house, he got knocked out. He didn't pass a lick. He took, when the police came, they even wrote how bad this, this, the house looked, glass everywhere and so on, and that he was in having a hard time. He was at the top of the steps, they told him to come down. There was a dog up there with him. But I want you to understand, my son never passed a lick. This man that did that had an arm, he had an ankle bracelet on. When I told my husband, when I had to wake him up and say, they just called and said Tony's dead, I said, he said, mm, mm, mm. He was a man that beat a man so bad, he put him in the hospital. That he has never had the answers to that. None of the police. All I'm saying that you in Wilkinsburg, look at me, I am a grieving mother. And all I'm saying, he's a, he, my son was a human being. Never once had they had the answer. If you do annex, I want that group to go with me to District Attorney Sapala. For full disclosure, he has said he would see me. But maybe if the whole group would go with, all I want you to know is, I just want you at the table, that you come to the table, explain what happened. That's all, that's all I'm asking. He was a human being, this was my only son.
Thank you, Ms. Brown. And I'm going to go back to Ikahana Halmakena one more time to make sure that she's not on. Is she still on? No. You're still on, but you're still muted. So Ikahana Halmakena. Is that moved?
Greetings.
Greetings, please continue.
Greetings. My title is Ikahana Halmakena and the Grand Inga, the Air Park Confederacy of Aboriginal American People. As I listen to Ms. Brown's speech for support, to hear her story, I often think of all the stories that are out there, of those voices, of those human people who have been violated, whose rights have been violated, and they don't get the attention that they deserve. There are many people who have been harmed, who have been maimed, who have been killed by the police. Yet their stories have not been heard, and justice eludes them, to include myself, a victim of inaccountability of the police. As I explained to you last week, I was a victim myself, caught in the crossfire, maimed, permanently scarred and injured. Where is the justice for us? Because our stories are not on WPXI or Channel 2 News, does that mean we don't deserve justice? I think not. I think the story is more well-read as justice for all. And we are appealing to City Council to do what is right, to do what is fair, to do what is just. The utmost good faith shall be honored to the people, and we are the people. Our voices shall be heard, our pleas are being made. It's up to you, City Council. What will you do? When you have people such as myself, such as Ms. Brown, coming to City Council on a weekly basis, airing out our grievances, but falling upon deaf ears? When will there be legislation implemented for fair and just accountability for those who have been harmed? Now is the time for justice. Now is the time for redress. Now is the time for accountability. Will one of the starting nine decide that they will enact legislation to right some of these wrongs? You have the ability to do so. Will you sit down at the table with some of these victims to find out what they need? Will you sit down at the table with some of these victims to find out what they need? Some people are disabled. Some of the damage irreversible. However, you've heard the plea of a grieving mother. What will you do, city council? Bring some of these victims to the table, enact legislation that will make them whole once again. We are broken.
Thank you. That exhaust our list of registered speakers. And I will now move on to the next order of business, which is the presentations of papers. And we'll begin with Councilman Reverend Ricky Burgess, Chair of Urban Recreation. Good morning, Councilman.
Councilman Reverend Burgess presents Bill Number 2299, Resolution Authorizing the Mayor and Director of the Department of Public Works and the Director of the Department of Parks and Recreation to enter into a certain corporation agreement amendment as further provided herein with the Pittsburgh Parks Conservancy with the intent of extending and expanding the terms and scope of the existing agreement. Bill Number 2300, Resolution Providing for the Designation and Transfer of Certain Public Properties Within the Hill District and Polish Hill Neighborhoods from the Greenways for Pittsburgh Program and Other Adjacent Vacant Properties under city ownership to be formalized and adopted as a city park. Bill Number 2301, Resolution Providing for the Designation and Transfer of Certain Public Properties Within Overbrook Neighborhoods from the Greenways for Pittsburgh Program and Other Adjacent Vacant Properties under city ownership to be formalized and adopted as a city park. Bill Number 2302, Resolution Providing for the Designation and Transfer of Certain Public Properties in the South Side Slopes and Allentown Neighborhoods from the Greenways for Pittsburgh Program and Other Vacant Properties under city ownership to be formalized and adopted as a city park. Bill Number 2303, Resolution Providing for the Designation and Transfer of Certain Public Properties Within the Brookline Neighborhoods from the Greenways for Pittsburgh Program and Other Adjacent Vacant Properties under city ownership to be formalized and adopted as a city park. Bill Number 2304, Resolution Providing for the Designation and Transfer of Certain Public Properties Within the Beachview and Mount Washington Neighborhoods from the Greenways for Pittsburgh Program and Other Adjacent Vacant Properties under city ownership to be formalized and adopted as a city park.
Excuse me, members. Thank you. I'm sorry, ma'am.
2305.
I'm sorry, ma'am.
Resolution Providing for the Designation and Transfer of Certain Public Properties Within the Hazelwood, Glen Hazel, and Greenfield Neighborhoods from the Greenways for Pittsburgh Program and Other Adjacent Vacant Properties under city ownership to be formalized and adopted as a city park. Bill Number 2306, Resolution Authorizing the Department of Parks and Recreation to enter into a Community Partner Access Agreement with poor law and no cost for the use of the Burnwind Community Center in order to provide recreational and community-focused activities.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. And Councilman Coghill, Chair of Public Works.
Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you. Good morning, Councilman.
Councilwoman Coghill presents Bill Number 2307, Resolution Further Amending Resolution Number 797, entitled, Resolution Adopting and Approving the 2018 Capital Budget and the 2018 CDBG Program and the 2018 through 2023 Capital Improvement Program by reducing Smallman Street Reconstruction by $7,000 and increasing bike share by $7,000. Bill Number 2308, Resolution Providing for a Settlement Agreement with the Pennsylvania Department of Transportation for costs associated with work on the Central Business District Signal Phase 2 Project with a total project cost of $5,304,001, of which is already appropriated and spent, and the municipal share of Commonwealth incurred costs not to exceed $13,465.59, an increase of $3,465.59 from the previously executed agreement. Bill Number 2309, Resolution Providing for an amended reimbursement agreement with the Pennsylvania Department of Transportation for costs associated with the addition of the final design right-of-way and utility phases of the Swine Bridge Project and providing for payment not to exceed $2,350,000, a $1,300,000 increase from the previously executed agreement, reimbursable at 95%, and the municipal share of Commonwealth incurred costs not to exceed $4,000, an increase of $2,500 from the previously executed agreement. Bill Number 2310, Resolution Providing for a reimbursement agreement with the Pennsylvania Department of Transportation for costs associated with the Pittsburgh pedestrian wayfinding project, providing for the payment of costs not to exceed $1,400,000. This resolution serves to authorize only the reimbursement agreement at a cost of $0. Further resolutions will authorize the project-specific service agreements. Bill Number 2311, Resolution Providing for a supplemental agreement with the Larson Design Grouping for costs associated with the West Ohio Street Bridge Project, providing for the payment of costs not to exceed $825,112.90, an increase of $84,596.79 from the previously executed agreement. Bill Number 2312, Resolution Providing for a reimbursement agreement with the Pennsylvania Department of Transportation for costs associated with the Healthy Ride Electrified Project through the Congestion Mitigation and Air Quality Improvement Program. Bill Number 2313, Resolution Providing for a reimbursement agreement with the Pennsylvania Department of Transportation through their Transportation Alternative Set-Aside Program for costs associated with Critical Sidewalk Gaps Project and providing for the payment not to exceed $980,000 federally reimbursable at 100% and the municipal share of Commonwealth incurred costs not to exceed $0. Bill Number 2314, Ordinance Amending and Supplementing the Pittsburgh City Code, Title 4 Public Place and Property, Article 2, Telecommunications in the Right-of-Way by Amending and Supplementing Language to Section 42703, 060709, 111619, and 42, or 2720, establishing certain general and specific standards relating to the location, placement, construction, and maintenance of non-tower wireless communications facilities and small cell facilities, establishing certain general and specific standards for wireless communication facilities in the public right-of-ways, establishing certain general and specific standards for wireless communications facilities outside the public right-of-ways, providing for definitions, providing for the enforcement of said regulations, and providing for an effective date. Bill Number 2315, Resolution Amending Resolution Number 332, entitled, Authorizing the Mayor and Director of the Department of Public Works to enter into a professional services agreement between the city and Winston Design Development for architectural and engineering design services for a series of interior remodels for six fire stations within the city at a cost not to exceed $407,872.66 to the not-to-exceed amount of $702,769.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. And that brings us to Councilwoman Gross, Chair of Intergovernmental Affairs.
Madam President.
Thank you, Council. Good morning.
Councilwoman Gross presents Bill Number 2316, Resolution Authorizing the URA to acquire all the city's right, title, and interest, if any, in into the publicly-owned property in the 13th ward of the city designated in the D Registry Office of Allegheny County, 623 North Homewood Avenue, Council District Number 9. Bill Number 2317, Resolution Authorizing the URA to acquire all the city's right, title, and interest, if any, in into the publicly-owned property in the 26th ward of the city, east side of Perrisville Avenue, just north of North Charles Street, Council District Number 6. Bill Number 2318, Resolution Approving Execution of a deed by and between the URA and the city for the cellar block 88L, Freak Park Expansion, Council District Number 5. Bill Number 2319, Resolution Authorizing the URA to acquire all the city's right, title, and interest, if any, in into the publicly-owned property in the 12th ward of the city designated in the D Registry Office of Allegheny County as north side of Larimer Avenue, east of Meadow Street, Council District Number 9. Bill Number 2320, Resolution Approving Execution of a deed by and between the URA for the cellar block 88G and various lots, block 88H and 72, and block 88R in the 14th ward of the city, nine-mile-run Greenway Expansion, Council District Number 5. Bill Number 2348, Resolution Calling on the URA to report to the Pittsburgh City Council on all ongoing programs and initiatives that support the city's food system. Bill Number 2349, Resolution Amending Resolution Number 580, entitled, Authorizing the Mayor and Director of the Office of Management and Budget to enter into an agreement with the URA for the completion of projects approved in the city's American Rescue Plan by previously-approved URA ARP funding to aid food justice funds.
Thank you. And our next committee is Councilman Kraus, Chair of Human Resources.
Under my orders, Madam President.
Thank you. Thank you, Councilman. Good morning. And Councilman Lavelle, Chair of Finance and Law. Good morning, Councilman.
Good morning, Madam President.
Thank you.
Councilwoman Lavelle presents Bill Number 2321, Resolution Authorizing the Mayor and Director of the Department of Finance to execute a quick claim deed or deeds in all related documents, agreements, and instruments conveying as is all of the city's right, title, and interest, if any, in block 25B, lot 15, block 29F, lot 89, and block 25P, lot 39, the properties of Ward 6 and Ward 2 of Council District 7 to the URA for consideration of $1 each, contingent upon the mayor and director of the Department of Finance first entering into a corporation agreement with the URA, setting forth the rights and obligations of the city and the URA relating to these initial conveniences, and further setting forth the right and obligations of the city and the URA relating to the subsequent disposition of this property to third parties. Bill Number 2322, Resolution Authorizing the Mayor and Director of Finance to acquire from the URA all of the URA's rights, title, and interest, if any, to the URA-owned properties located at 6111 Butler Street in the 10th ward of City Council District 7, designated as block 120G, lot 145, in the D Registry Office of Allegheny County, Pennsylvania, as known as the 62nd Street site, or the sum of $1 plus all necessary and incidental expenses in connection with such acquisition. Bill Number 2323, Resolution Amending Resolution 866, authorizing the creation of the Emergency Medical Services Hazards Materials Trust Fund to rename the fund and clarify and update its uses. Bill Number 2324, Resolution Authorizing the Mayor and Director of the Department of Finance on behalf of the city to enter into a corporation agreement with the Housing Authority of the city to document local corporation and housing authorities agreement to make payments in lieu of taxes for the Manchester redevelopment housing development. Bill Number 2325, Resolution Authorizing the Mayor and Director of the Department of Finance on behalf of the city to enter into a corporation agreement with the Housing Authority of the city to document local corporation and the authorities agreement to make payments in lieu of taxes for the Northview Mid-Rise Housing Development. Bill Number 2326, Resolution Authorizing the Mayor and Director of the Department of Finance on behalf of the city to enter into a corporation agreement with the Housing Authority to document local corporation and the Housing Authorities Agreement to make payments in lieu of taxes for Larimer East Liberty Phase 1 Housing Development. Bill Number 2327, Resolution Authorizing the Mayor and Director of the Department of Finance to enter into a corporation agreement with the Housing Authority to document local corporation and the Housing Authorities Agreement to make payments in lieu of taxes for Larimer East Liberty Phase 2 Housing Development. Bill Number 2328, Resolution Authorizing the Mayor and Director of the Department of Finance to enter into a corporation agreement with the Housing Authority to document local corporation and the Housing Authorities Agreement to make payments in lieu of taxes for Larimer East Liberty Phase 3 Housing Project. Bill Number 2329, Resolution Authorizing the Mayor and Director of the Department of Finance to enter into a corporation agreement with the Housing Authority of the city to document local corporation and the Housing Authorities Agreement to make payments in lieu of taxes for Larimer East Liberty Phase 4 Housing Development. Bill Number 2330, Resolution Providing for the Conveyance by the city of certain property having been placed for sale to adjourning property owners in conjunction with the City of Pittsburgh Sideyard Program, Item A through D, 3447 Milwaukee, 5454 Kincaid, 6340 Maxwell, and 141 Burick. Bill Number 2331, Ordinance Amending the City Code at Title 2 Fiscal Article 11, Dedicated Funds for Comprehensive Municipal Pension Trust Fund, Chapter 272, Dedicated Funding for Comprehensive Municipal Pension Trust Fund to extend the parking asset for an additional five years. Bill Number 2332, Resolution Providing for the Execution of a Corporation Agreement with the URA in an amount not to exceed $15,000 for step repair.
Thank you. And Councilman Lavelle, you have a motion to waive the rules of counsel for Bill 2331? You have two. Okay.
Second.
Motion, second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
The bills will appear on tomorrow's standing committee agenda. Thank you, Councilman.
Madam President, if I may, I just wanted to add my name as a co-sponsor to Bill Number 2348.
2348. Where was that, Councilman? Oh, under your command.
2348.
Is that the report?
That's the food insecurity.
Thank you, Councilman. And Councilman O'Connor, Public Safety Services. Thank you, Councilman. Good morning.
Good morning.
Good to see you here.
Councilman O'Connor presents Bill Number 2333, Resolution Authorizing the Department of Public Safety to enter into a license agreement with the City of Greensburg on behalf of the Volunteer Fire Department at no cost for temporary use of a City of Pittsburgh fire truck due to a recent accident that has left Greensburg Volunteer Fire Department without an operational fire truck for an indefinite amount of time. Bill Number 2334, Resolution Authorizing the Council and the city to formulate guidelines to be followed by city police officers when making a warrantless arrest as required by their under and as required by the Pennsylvania Chiefs of Police Association, Pennsylvania Law Enforcement Accreditation Program.
Thank you. And Councilman O'Connor, you have a motion to waive the rules of counsel?
Yes, I have a motion to waive the rules on 2333 and 2334.
Thank you, Councilman. Motion, second. Any discussion? The bills, all in favor?
Aye.
The bills will appear on tomorrow's standing committee agenda. Thank you, Councilman. And Councilwoman Strasburger, Chair of Innovation, Performance, and Asset Management.
Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Good morning. Good to see you.
Councilperson Strasburger presents Bill Number 2335, Resolution Amending Resolution Number 616, Providing for an Agreement in or a Lease by and Between the City and First Vehicle Services, pursuant to which first vehicle will furnish all work and services needed to manage and maintain the city's vehicle fleet, cost not to exceed $66,689,914 over a seven-year period.
Thank you. And Councilman Wilson, Chair of Land Use and Economic Development.
Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Councilman. Good morning.
Councilman Wilson presents Bill Number 2336, Resolution Authorizing the Mayor and Director of the Department of City Planning and the Director of the Department of Permits, Licenses, and Inspections to enter into an agreement with Allegheny County Conservation District with the intent to clarify and roles and responsibilities related to erosion and sediment control on construction activities with significant earth disturbance. Bill Number 2337, Resolution Authorizing the Mayor and Director of the Department of City Planning and the Director of the Department of Permits, Licenses, and Inspections to enter into an agreement with the Pittsburgh Water and Sewer Authority with the intent of delineating each party's obligation- with the intent of delineating each party's obligations with respect to completion of each minimum control measure required for the N P D E S permit. Bill Number Twenty Three Thirty Eight, Resolution Further Amending Resolution Number Eight Sixty Three, entitled Resolution Adopting and Approving the Twenty Nineteen Capital Budget, Twenty Nineteen C D B G Program, and the Twenty Nineteen through Twenty Twenty Four Capital Improvement Program so as to reallocate Emergency Solutions Grant CARES Act funding and authorize a subsequent agreement to provide emergency shelter services, street outreach services, rental assistance, and housing relocation and stabilization services and/or data collection activities. Bill Number Twenty Three Thirty Nine, Resolution Amending Resolution Number Eight Oh Four, entitled Resolution Further Amending Resolution Number Eight Sixty Three, Resolution Adopting and Approving the Twenty Nineteen Capital Budget and the Twenty Nineteen C D B G Program and the Twenty Nineteen through Twenty Twenty Four Capital Improvement Program so as to reduce community-based organizations by four thousand, three hundred dollars and twenty-nine cents, increase neighborhood economic development by four thousand, three hundred dollars and twenty-nine cents, and authorize a subsequent agreement to revise a J D Edwards job number. Bill Number Twenty Three Forty, Resolution Providing for an Agreement with Strategy Solutions, Inc. to provide public engagement and citizen participation for the city's annual action plan and consolidated five-year plan for HUD in an amount not to exceed one hundred twenty-two thousand and ten dollars. Bill Number Twenty Three Forty One, Resolution Providing for the Issuing of a Warrant in favor of Student Conservation Association, Inc. in the amount of thirteen thousand, six hundred and three dollars and twenty-one cents for sustainability fellowship services provided to the city for placement fees and public sector fellows. Bill Number Twenty Three Forty Two, Resolution Authorizing the Mayor and Director of the Department of Permits, Licenses, and Inspection to enter on behalf of the city into a professional services agreement with Babak Acoustics for Sound Engineering Consulting Services at an overall cost not to exceed forty-five thousand dollars. Bill Number Twenty Three Forty Three, Resolution Further Amending Resolution Number Six Seventy Five, entitled Adopting and Approving the Two Thousand Nine Capital Budget by transferring forty-five thousand, eight hundred seven dollars and sixty-three cents from West Ohio Street Bridge to East Ohio Streetscape Planning and Design. Bill Number Twenty Three Forty Four, Resolution Further Amending Resolution Number Seven Sixty Eight, adopting and approving the Twenty Ten Capital Budget by transferring four thousand, one hundred ninety-two dollars and thirty-seven cents of remaining funds from District One specific capital projects to East Ohio Streetscape Planning and Design.
Thank you, and we have myself, Chair of Hearings. Sorry, two communications. Thank you.
Council President Kell Smith presents Bill Number Twenty Three Forty Five, Communication from Kevin Paulus, Director of the Office of Management and Budget, submitting acting pay approval on behalf of the Department of Law for Michael Kennedy for the acting pay policy revised in June of twenty eighteen. Bill Number Twenty Three Forty Six, Communication from Kevin Paulus, Director of Office of Management and Budget, submitting acting pay approval on behalf of the Department of Innovation and Performance for Jeffrey Hovis for the acting pay policy revised in June of twenty eighteen.
Thank you, and that moves us on, I'm sorry, have a motion to read, receive, and file?
Yes, so moved.
Thank you, and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
And that's approved, and then we have, we'll move on to any unfinished business. Is there any unfinished business before council?
Madam President, may I just briefly?
Yes, Councilman.
Yeah, thank you, in reference to Twenty Three Forty Five, I just want to say how pleased I am personally that Michael Kennedy has been chosen to lead the department and enduring the transition, and he's just a really good choice, and I'm really pleased to see that. Yeah, thank you.
Thank you, thank you, any other members? And that moves us on to our next order of business, which is the reports to committee for final action. We'll begin with Councilman Lavelle, Committee on Finance and Law. Thank you, Councilman.
Councilman Lavelle presents Bill Number Twenty Two Ninety One, Report of the Committee on Finance and Law for December Eighth, Twenty Twenty One, with an affirmative recommendation. Bill Number Twenty Two Thirteen, Resolution Authorizing the Issuing of a Warrant in favor of Crystal Abbott and her attorney in the amount of thirty-four thousand, nine hundred and ninety-six dollars in full and final settlement of litigation filed in the Court of Common Pleas of Allegheny County. Bill Number Twenty Two Fourteen, Resolution Authorizing the Issuing of a Warrant in favor of Michael Lucas in the amount of twenty-five hundred dollars in full and final settlement of litigation filed in the Court of Common Pleas of Allegheny County. Bill Number Twenty Two Fifteen, Resolution Authorizing the Issuing of a Warrant in favor of Kelly Masucci and her attorneys in the amount of fifty-nine thousand, four hundred and seventy-seven dollars in full and final settlement of litigation filed in the Court of Common Pleas of Allegheny County. Bill Number Twenty Two Sixteen, Resolution Authorizing the Mayor and the city's solicitor to, on behalf of the city, to enter into a professional services agreement, a professional services agreement with Cohine Law Group to address a matter of pending telecommunications litigation at an amount not to exceed sixty-one thousand, fifty dollars. Bill Number Twenty Two Seventeen, Resolution Authorizing the Issuing of a Warrant in favor of Alan Daniels and Simone and Simone P.C. in the amount of sixty-five thousand dollars relating to the full and final settlement of a case filed in the Allegheny County Court of Common Pleas. Bill Number Twenty Two Eighteen, Resolution Authorizing the Issuing of a Warrant in favor of Summer Abbott and Phil Dillasente and Associates in the amount of fifteen thousand dollars in full and final settlement of litigation filed in the Court of Common Pleas for Allegheny County. Bill Number Twenty Two Forty Eight, Resolution Authorizing the Director and the Department of Finance to enter into a license agreement with Giant Eagle, Inc. to allow the performance of pre-development due diligence investigations and site inspections on designated city property in order to facilitate the construction of a get-go cafe and market in the Homewood Larimer community.
Thank you, Madam Clerk, and Councilman Lavelle, you have a motion to amend?
Yes.
We have a motion to amend, do we have a second?
Second.
Any discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
The bill's amended, now the vote on all the bills. Is there any discussion on all of the, any of the other bills? Seeing none, the bills are not ready for final action, all in favor of the passage with I when the name is called, those opposed vote no, with clerk please call the roll.
Reverend Burgess, Mr. Coghill, Ms. Gross, Mr. Kraus, Mr. Lavelle, Mr. O'Connor, Ms. Strasburger, Mr. Wilson, Mrs. Kell Smith, President.
Aye.
Eyes nine, no zero.
Thank you, the bills haven't received the legally required number of votes are finally passed. And that moves us on to Councilman Corey O'Connor, Committee on Public Safety Services. Thank you, Councilman.
Councilman O'Connor presents Bill Number Twenty Two Ninety Two, Report of the Committee on Public Safety Services for December Eighth, Twenty Twenty One, with an affirmative recommendation. Bill Number Twenty Two Forty Nine, Resolution Authorizing the Mayor and Director of the Department of Public Safety to enter into professional services agreement with Animal Friends and Humane Animal Rescue for services related to the city's spay and neuter program at a cost not to exceed one hundred and forty thousand dollars over two years. Bill Number Twenty Two Fifty, Resolution Authorizing the Mayor and Director of Public Safety to enter on behalf of the city into a commodities agreement with Premier Safety for the purchase of protective clothing for firefighters on an as-needed basis.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. And the bills are not ready, is any discussion on the bills? Seeing none, the bills are not ready for final action, all in favor of the passage with I when the name is called, those opposed vote no, with clerk please call the roll.
Reverend Burgess, Mr. Coghill, Ms. Gross, Mr. Kraus, Mr. Lavelle, Mr. O'Connor?
Aye on this bill, and a meeting is early in my office, so aye on the remaining bills. Thank you.
Ms. Strasburger?
Aye.
Mr. Wilson?
Aye.
Mrs. Kell Smith, President.
Aye.
Eyes nine, no zero.
Thank you, the bills haven't received the legally required number of votes are finally passed. Thank you, Councilman, and that, now we'll move on to Councilman Anthony Coghill, Committee on Public Works. Thank you, Councilman.
Councilman Coghill presents Bill Number Twenty Two Ninety Three, Report of the Committee on Public Works for December Eighth, Twenty Twenty One, with an affirmative recommendation. Bill Number Twenty Two Forty One, Resolution Providing for a Reimbursement Agreement with the Pennsylvania Department of Transportation for costs associated with the C B D Signals Phase Four Project Construction Phase, providing for the payment not to exceed six million, two hundred thousand dollars. This resolution serves to authorize only the reimbursement agreement at a cost of thirty-six thousand dollars. Future resolutions will authorize the project-specific service agreements. Bill Number Twenty Two Forty Two, Resolution Providing for a Supplemental Agreement with Larson Design Group, Inc. for costs associated with the C B D Signals Phase Three Project provided for the payment of costs not to exceed seven hundred thirteen thousand, four hundred nine dollars and seventy-four cents in increase of forty-seven thousand, nine hundred ninety-two dollars, seven hundred ninety-two dollars and forty-six cents. Bill Number Twenty Two Forty Three, Resolution Amending Resolution Five Nineteen, entitled Resolution Providing for an amended reimbursement agreement with the Pennsylvania Department of Transportation for costs associated with the Windsor Avenue-Carnahan Road Intersection Project providing for the payment of costs not to exceed three million, twenty-five thousand dollars in increase of two hundred and fifty-one thousand dollars to increase the project's construction budget. The original agreement was authorized by Resolution Eight Fifty to clarify municipal incurred and total project costs. Bill Number Twenty Two Sixty Four, Resolution Authorizing the Mayor and Directors of the Department of Finance Parks and Recreation and Public Works to enter into an agreement with the Friends of Neil Log House pursuant to which the Friends will make renovations, capital improvements, and will thereafter further assist with operations and maintenance of the log house and with the provisions of related programs. Bill Number Twenty Two Sixty Five, Resolution Authorizing the Mayor and Director of the Department of Mobility and Infrastructure on behalf of the city to enter into a supplemental agreement with C D R Maguire, Inc. for project design, management services, and reviews in connection with various City of Pittsburgh construction projects to add funding for the construction phase of the South Side Signals Project, final design phase of the Liberty Avenue, Penn Avenue, and Smithfield Street Projects and preliminary engineering phase of the Swindell Bridge and the Larimer Avenue Bridge, and to increase the total cost not to exceed one million, nine hundred fifty-one thousand, one hundred fifty dollars and seventy-six cents from an agreement in increase of seven hundred twenty-six thousand, five hundred fourteen dollars and seventy-seven cents.
Thank you, Madam Clerk, you've heard the reading of the title of the bills. Is there any discussion on the bills? Seeing none, the bills are not ready for final action, all in favor of the passage with I when the name is called, those opposed vote no, with clerk please call the roll.
Reverend Burgess, Mr. Coghill, Ms. Gross, Mr. Kraus, Mr. Lavelle, Ms. Strasburger, Mr. Wilson, Mrs. Kell Smith, President.
Aye.
Eyes nine, no zero.
Thank you, the bills haven't received the legally required number of votes are finally passed. Thank you, Councilman. Councilman Bruce Kraus, Committee on Human Resources.
Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Councilman.
Thank you, Madam Clerk.
Councilman Kraus presents Bill Number Twenty Two Ninety Four, Report of the Committee on Human Resources for December Eighth, with an affirmative recommendation. Bill Number Twenty Two Forty Seven, Resolution Providing for a Professional Services Agreement with Big Picture Lab, LLC for video production services in an amount not to exceed ten thousand dollars. Eight thousand dollars will come from the HUD Trust Fund, and two thousand dollars will come from the Commission's Community Development Block Grant Funding.
You've heard the reading of the title of the bills, is there any discussion on the bills? On the bill? See, seeing none, the bill's not ready for final passage, all in favor? Final action, all in favor of the passage with I when the name is called, those opposed vote no. With clerk please call the roll.
Reverend Burgess, Mr. Coghill, Ms. Gross, Mr. Kraus?
Aye. Aye.
Mr. Lavelle, Ms. Strasburger, Mr. Wilson, Mrs. Kell Smith, President.
Aye.
Eyes nine, no zero.
Thank you, the bills haven't received the legally required number of votes is finally passed. And that moves us on to Councilman Bobby Wilson, Committee on Land Use and Economic Development.
Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Councilman, good morning. Thank, I say good morning already.
Councilman Wilson presents Bill Number Twenty Two Ninety Five, Report of the Committee on Land Use and Economic Development for December Eighth, Twenty Twenty One, with an affirmative recommendation. Bill Number Eighteen Sixty Seven, Ordinance Amending the Pittsburgh Code Title Five Traffic, Article Seven, Parking, Chapter Five Forty Nine, Residential Parking Permit Program. So as to clarify the administrative process for the program, revise for virtual permitting, add the permit fees to the city's annual fee book, adopt regulations for the use of visitor permits and non-resident permits, and create the Hybrid R P P Area Program. Bill Number Twenty Two Fifty One, Resolution Further Amending Resolution Number Eight Forty, entitled Resolution Adopting and Approving the Twenty Twenty Capital Budget and the Twenty Twenty C D B G Program and the Twenty Twenty through Twenty Twenty Five Capital Improvement Program so as to identify specific public service grant projects in the City Council District Nine and authorize a subsequent agreement for operation, administrative expenses, maintenance, purchase of equipment, and/or rehabilitation of neighborhood facilities on behalf of the residents of the city. Bill Number Twenty Two Fifty Two, Resolution Further Amending Resolution Number Six Forty Seven, entitled Resolution Adopting and Approving the Twenty Twenty One Capital Budget and the Twenty Twenty One C D B G Program and the Twenty Twenty One through Twenty Twenty Six Capital Improvement Program so as to identify specific public service grant projects in City Council District Nine and authorize a subsequent agreement for operation, administrative expenses, maintenance, purchase of equipment, and/or rehabilitation of neighborhood facilities on behalf of the residents of the city. Bill Number Twenty Two Fifty Three, Resolution Further Amending Resolution Number Six Forty Seven, entitled Resolution Adopting and Approving the Twenty Twenty One Capital Budget, the Twenty Twenty One C D B G Program, and the Twenty Twenty One through Twenty Twenty Six Capital Improvement Program so as to identify specific public service grant projects in Council District Seven and authorize a subsequent agreement for operation, administrative expenses, maintenance, purchase of equipment, and/or rehabilitation of neighborhood facilities on behalf of the residents of the city. Bill Number Twenty Two Fifty Four, Resolution Amending Resolution Number Eight Thirty Two, Authorizing the Mayor and Department of Permits, Licenses, and Inspection to enter into an amended agreement with Off Power Consulting Corporation to provide customer service and soft skill training to the department staff. The amended agreement shall be in an amount not to exceed fifty-eight thousand, one hundred and fifty dollars. Bill Number Twenty Two Eighty Six, Resolution Further Amending Resolution Number Eight Forty, entitled Resolution Adopting and Approving the Twenty Twenty Capital Budget and the Twenty Twenty C D B G Program and the Twenty Twenty through Twenty Twenty Five Capital Improvement Program by reducing comprehensive revenue management system by ninety thousand, five hundred and fifty dollars and increasing remediation of condemned buildings by ninety thousand, five hundred and fifty dollars.
Thank you, you've heard the reading of the title of the bills, is there any discussion on the bills? Councilman Kraus?
Yeah, Madam, excuse me, Madam President, thank you. Just one final time, I want to take a moment to recognize and congratulate Councilman Wilson on a job well done, in this, you know, you can see the legislative history here before us. This was no small feat, and it took quite some time to get this piece to a place where all members were comfortable to pass it. And I just want to speak to Millie Sess and Joan Dickerson. They are absolutely two of my most favorite constituents that I've had the pleasure to represent for close to fifteen years now. And I know they have the best interest of Oakland residents at heart when they come to lobby and petition, and they come and lobby and petition us quite frequently. I met with them yesterday, I assured them that as this unfolds, if we find that there are hiccups in here or unintended consequence that might need tweaked here or there to help Oakland residents, more than happy to do that. But at this stage of the game, this, it's a good bill, we're going to pass it, and you know, and that goes out to really any resident that's affected by R P P. If we find, you know, there are unintended consequence, this council is flexible and fluid, we are happy to adjust accordingly to make it the best we can. I said to both Joan and Millie yesterday, we're not in the business of perfect, we're in the business of good, right? Perfect is the enemy of the good, we have a good bill before us, it's, you know, taken more than enough time to pass it, good leadership from Councilman Wilson on the bill, and I'm happy and proud to vote for it today, and will be ever mindful of any tweaks that might need to take place down the road.
Thank you, Councilman, very well said. Any other members? Councilwoman Strasburger, and then Councilman Wilson.
Thank you, I'll second what Councilman Kraus just said, and also want to congratulate Councilman Wilson on this bill, this nuts and bolts bill that... Wilson on his, on this bill, this, 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 um, nuts and bolts bill that is really going to affect a lot of people in the city of Pittsburgh. And to say that, which I meant to say last week, I think the majority of concerns, not all, but the majority of concerns that I've heard from constituents that have not been addressed in the legislation, will be addressed if we can provide the parking authority with the resources and whatever they need to increase enforcement to the level that is adequate. If we get to enforcement to a level that is really adequate, if not superior, um, we, I, I think a lot of the problems disappear. So I, I, I'm committed to doing that. I know that Councilman Wilson, as a board member of the parking authority, um, wants to do that too, and just wanted to state that.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Councilman Wilson.
Yeah, I just want to thank all members, uh, especially the members that work closely with me who have, uh, constituents that are concerned with the RPP changes. Uh, I, I would like to address some of the standout, um, kind of, you know, comments that are more towards like the negative comments about this bill. Um, one is, um, you know, about enforcement. I think a great option i- is, is a hybrid option, which is just an option here. It's not going to merely just happen. Um, and there's a process for that, a very transparent public process. But just imagine if we could start collecting money on people that are parking right outside your home, that literally are there, that mean that could go into a garage, or they're trying to get away with just that one or two hours in a very high-density area, uh, where they should be parking on the main street or in the garage. Um, and so that's going to ultimately increase our enforcement, um, so that we're going after, um, people that are parking like that down those streets. So I, you know, press anyone that's living in those areas to really consider that, um, set up that meeting as soon as possible. But the other one is this, uh, this, all these different passes that we've created. Right now, the system is to call into, you know, the parking authority and to try and get a variance. That's a lot of weight on that one individual that does it at the parking authority, and it clogs up the system for others to try and get other things done. And what we're trying to do here is actually, you know, create a way, uh, for people to do that on their own, uh, legitimately. Uh, for instance, a contractor who's been working in the area for multiple weeks in a row, they have to show a permit that they're going to be doing that, and, uh, they can get access. Uh, right now, we have no, we, you know, if you're looking outside your home and you see trucks in the street, I mean, their license plate could very well be in the system and, uh, never being ticketed, never really being recorded appropriately. So this really creates a way for us to start tracking this and looking at it, um, in a transparent way, and just really looking at the data and see how we can improve the system, um, instead of its current forty-year-old, uh, state. So I appreciate everyone's time on this. And yes, I am willing to come back and, and, uh, you know, amend this bill if we have to. But, uh, let, uh, for the public, I would give it, uh, definitely some months so that we can get the, the software up and running, uh, on the website, on the parking authority, to actually go in and, and be able to use these new passes.
Thank you, Councilman. Any other members? Seeing none, I just want to congratulate you and thank you for your work on this as well, Councilman. I think you really showed what you can do when you work with people and, and, uh, have your mindset on something. This was significant, and it's going to be really beneficial to the city. So thank you for your work on this. Um, any other discussion? Seeing none, the bills are not ready for final action. All in favor of the passage with aye when their name is called? Those opposed will vote no. Please call the roll.
Reverend Burgess.
Aye.
Mr. Coghill.
Aye.
Ms. Gross.
Aye.
Mr. Kraus.
Aye.
Mr. Lavelle.
Aye.
Ms. Strasburger.
Aye.
Mr. Wilson.
Aye.
Mrs. Kell Smith, President.
Aye.
Eyes nine, no zero.
Thank you. The bills haven't received the legally required number of votes are finally passed. That brings us on to Councilman Ricky Burgess, um, Committee on Urban Recreation. Thank you, Councilman.
Madam, Madam President, I just want to, sorry, I want to interrupt for a second. I have to get to a meeting. I'd like to register all aye votes for the meeting bills.
Yes. Thank you, Councilman. Thank you, Councilman.
Councilman Reverend Burgess.
Congratulations on your bill.
Bill Number Twenty-two ninety-six. Report of the Committee on Urban Recreation for December eighth, twenty-twenty-one with an affirmative recommendation. Bill Number Twenty-two forty. Resolution authorizing the mayor and director of the Department of Public Works and director of the Department of Parks and Recreation to enter into an amended corporation agreement with the Pittsburgh Park Conservancy with the intent of extending and expanding the term and scope of the existing agreement.
Thank you. You've heard the reading of the title of the bills. Is there any discussion on the bill? Seeing none, the bills are not ready for final pa- final action. All in favor of the passage with aye when their name is called? Those opposed will vote no. Please call the roll.
Reverend Burgess. Mr. Coghill.
Aye.
Ms. Gross. Mr. Kraus.
Aye.
Mr. Lavelle.
Aye.
Ms. Strasburger.
Aye.
Mrs. Kell Smith, President.
Aye.
Eyes eight, no zero.
Thank you. The bills haven't received the legally required number of votes are finally passed. And that moves us on to Councilwoman Erica Strasburger, Committee on Innovation, Performance, and Asset Management.
Madam President.
Thank you, Councilwoman.
First, Strasburger presents Bill Number Twenty-two ninety-seven. Report of the Committee on Innovation, Performance, and Asset Management for December eighth with an affirmative recommendation. Bill Number Twenty-one sixty-one. Resolution authorizing the city to enter into a cable franchise agreement and certain subsidiary agreements for other services arising from the cable franchise agreement with Comcast Cable Communications Management, LLC.
Thank you. You've heard the reading of the title of the bill. Is there any discussion on the bill? Seeing none, the bills are not ready for final action. All in favor of the passage with aye when their name is called? Those opposed will vote no. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Reverend Burgess.
Aye.
Mr. Coghill.
Aye.
Mr. Kraus.
Aye.
Mr. Lavelle.
Aye.
Ms. Strasburger.
Aye.
Mrs. Kell Smith, President.
Aye.
Eyes eight, no zero.
Thank you. The bill haven't received the legally required number of votes are finally passed. That moves us on to our last committee of the day. Councilwoman Deborah Gross, Committee on Intergovernmental Affairs. Councilman Kraus for Councilwoman.
As Madam President, thank you, Madam Clerk.
Thank you.
Councilwoman Gross presents Bill Number Twenty-two ninety-eight. Report of the Committee on Intergovernmental Affairs for December eighth, twenty-twenty-one with an affirmative recommendation. Bill Number Twenty-two forty-six. Resolution providing for the execution of a corporation agreement with the URA in an amount not to exceed one hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars to support the creation of publicly accessible park space as part of the fifth and then witty redevelopment.
Thank you. You've heard the reading of the title of the bill. Is there any discussion on the bill? Seeing none, the bills are not ready for final action. All in favor of the passage with aye when their name is called? Those opposed will vote no. Please call the roll.
Reverend Burgess. Mr. Coghill.
Aye.
Mr. Kraus.
Aye.
Mr. Lavelle.
Aye.
Ms. Strasburger.
Aye.
It's, Mrs. Kell Smith, President.
Aye.
Eyes eight, no zero.
Thank you. The bill haven't received the legally required number of votes is finally passed. And that moves us on to motions and resolutions. And I have a few meeting announcements. Last one. This afternoon at twelve-thirty PM, council will hold a briefing with OMB relative to the pending bond legislation. Sessions will begin at twelve-thirty and one PM, one PM. Also this afternoon, it's, so the public knows, that's Office of Management and Budget, OMB. Also this afternoon at one-thirty PM, council will ho- host a cable cast public hearing on bills twenty-ninety-four, twenty-ninety-five, and twenty-ninety-six as they relate to the zoning, to zoning, uh, code updates. To register to fill out the signup form on the City Council meeting webpage, you may also call the city clerk's office at four-one-two-two-five-five-two-one-three-eight. Speaker registration will close at one-thirty AM today, eleven-thirty. I apologize, eleven-thirty AM, which is already closed. Tomorrow, Wednesday, December fourteenth at ten AM, council will hold their standing com- our standing committees meeting to register to speak.